So, good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Before going into public comment, I would like to acknowledge some special guests we have with us today. We have the Urban League Black Male Leadership Development Institute with us today. We want to welcome you all. We also have the Black Female Leadership Institute, and we want to welcome you all to City Council. It's a pleasure to have you with us. Mr. Patton, if there's anything you would like to come up to the mic and maybe give us a little bit of information about the institute?
Good morning. We're so grateful to be here, giving glory to God from whom all blessings flow. Thank you, esteemed members of council, for this opportunity for our young men and women. Councilman Lavelle, thank you. Brother Ricardo, Brother Jake, Brother Melvinell, for not just opening the doors to this chamber, but at the same time, opening the hearts and minds of our young people. So, thank you for your service to our city. I told the young men outside, I said, "Everything that happens on the other side of those doors affects everything that happens to you when you walk outside of them." So, we truly appreciate you for that. I also want to thank the Urban League of Greater Pittsburgh, our president and CEO, Carlos T. Carter, Victoria Goines, as well as Kelly Allen, for the opportunity to lead this program. I also want to thank our partners at Slippery Rock University and their nonprofit Leadership Institute for their partnership. I'll tell you briefly a little about BMLDI and who we are. It's a legacy program that was started in 2010 by the late Dr. Rex Crowley. He devoted his life, as well as his research, to the theory that the change that we need in our communities really exists and lies within these young men, and particularly given the opposition that exists, both systemically, culturally, thinking about the social determinants of health and what that means for social and community context, understanding all of those things, but ultimately knowing that the true solutions that we need for our young black men resides within them. And so, he has since passed, but as we like to say, that seed has reproduced after its own kind. So, what you see before you is exactly what he envisioned. And speaking of research, what you're also looking at are outliers, right? And statistics, what that indicates is, if you look at data, and of course, data drives decisions, but if you look at data, the data suggests that these individuals should be on their way to prison, or these individuals should be on their way to an early grave. But when you run what's called a regression analysis in statistics, there are always these things called outliers that sit outside of what you would anticipate or expect from that data. So, what you're looking at is outliers, and the numbers don't lie, but they don't tell the whole story either. So, if you take a young kid from Homewood, for example, raised by a single parent, you know, youngest, say, of three sons, raised in poverty, father was never around, you know, no grandparents to help support, mother working two jobs, say, at the hospital by day, working as a barmaid at night, just to make ends meet for the family, and really believing that education is the gateway to see beyond their environment. And then, lo and behold, despite all of those obstacles in the community and otherwise, that same individual goes on to graduate from college, to be the first to graduate from college, go on, get a master's, and go on and live a productive life as a productive member of society. That's what you're looking at. That's what you're looking at in me. That's my story. And so, I believe in this program because I believe in that transformational power and what that meant for me as a young man from Homewood, growing up, and needing programs that were enriching of this nature. So, in terms of our program and our students, first and foremost, y'all look good. And so, we've got a little bit of everything. We've got Westinghouse, we've got Carrick, we've got Propel, we've got Obama, we've got which is my alma mater, and I can testify to Mayor Ganey's jump shot. We did play together. He has some serious hops. But we got Obama Academy, we got Gateway, right? We got Plum, we got Norwin, who am I missing? Baldwin. Who else we got? I sit all the dice, right? So, you have a cross-section of this city, and when we think about even social community context, there's such a rich, when you think about just the different aspects, there's texture within that context as it relates to our young black males. So, we meet each of them where they are and from where they come, and also giving them the opportunity to build bridges. And so, I'm pleased with this year's cohort. We also broke the color barrier. Where's my brother Frank? Stand up. And y'all smiling, but he's blacker than me. He is. But that's what we're about, you know? We're about investing in the future. And so, in terms of our program, it's a year-round program. It's built upon a pedagogy of experiential leadership like this, so we believe that these types of immersive experiences help them to begin to visualize for themselves the type of future and the impact that they can make. So, while they're in the program, we have a campus residency all week. We're up at Slippery Rock, so we're taking them out of the city. We're out in the wilderness. They're having the opportunity to demonstrate true leadership. As part of our partnership with Slippery Rock and the nonprofit institute, they are each assigned a family group, so they're all solving a unique problem that's facing the community this week, and so their immersion here will also support that. At the end of the week, they will get a certificate and nonprofit leadership from the institute as well. And so, we believe in servant leadership. We're also dealing with trauma, so we got trauma-informed leadership applications that they'll be receiving as well. And so, throughout the week, we've got speakers and content doing career exploration. We had STEAM yesterday, just tremendous input on what it means to look at different career paths and opportunities. And so, that's who we are. It's a year-round program. We're so excited that we have our Black Female Leadership Development Institute. I want to thank Mount Arid as well. Assistant Michelle, thank you for everything that you're doing as well. And in closing, as much as you showed up for us today, we want you to know that we're showing up for you. We know that as much as your backs are up against the wall in terms of some of these pressing issues and problems facing the community and young black males and young black females, as much as your backs are up against the wall, we want you to know we got your back as well. So, we're doing our part. We believe that transformed leaders not only transform themselves, but they transcend their communities as well. So, thank you very much. We appreciate this, hon. Thank you.
Thank you. I also just need to acknowledge that the president and CEO of the Urban League is also with us, Mr. Carlos Carter. I'm not sure if there's anything you would like to add?
I just want to say, I'm so proud of these young people. You know, a lot of times on the news, we see not always the best of our people, but these young people represent the best of our future. And the thing I like about this program is it builds upon their strengths and empowers them to be change-makers who are career-ready and civic-minded. And so, we need to provide more opportunities like young people like this. You know, we see gun violence, we have to address poverty, right? We have to address mental health, but we have to build upon people's strengths. And so, give yourselves a clap to have a very proud year. That's all I want to say, but thank you guys for having us today.
Thank you. With that, again, welcome to City Council. We hope you certainly learned something today, and this is beneficial for you all. I know, assuming we get done with the meeting in time, I'll also have an opportunity to speak with you all, and I look forward to that. With that, we're going to move on to public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity is not permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Whom I do not see with us. Our next registered speaker is Chief Poma Chakman-Yahelihi. Whom I also do not see. So, our last registered speaker is Aikahana Hal Malkina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love in Ma'kealaka'ing. My title is Aikahana Hal Malkina. I am the Grand Inka of the Airflock Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Again, I would like to talk about justice today. And at the end, there's two other topics that I want to raise as issues. Justice delayed in America is the equivalent of justice denied in America. However, it is our collective focus and aim to change that reality by retelling American history through a truthful lens, a lens that sheds light on a painful history in the United States. Why apparently the United States is scrambling to cover it up yet again? Historically, books were burned. Now, it's critical race theory, the suppression of books, writing, literature, lectures, that expose the darker side of history, rarely told and far spoken of accurately. There are even attempts being made to cover up our existence as indigenous people in schools nationwide, removing any reference of indigenous names, likeness, and far images. While I agree with removing the whitewashed version of indigenous American people and replace them with images like the emblem of America, 1798, which shows a cinnamon-complexed woman holding a bow and arrow with a plume of feathers adorned upon her head. As notified an artist that etched this particular piece of art, in her description is a representation of the American people. Now, this piece of art is in the British Museum. Now, attempts are being made to continue to colonize the minds of our youth. No one has ever studied the effects of teaching children that their origins began with slavery. I would go as far as to suggest that we are watching those effects on the news. The violence, the removal of culture and morals, about a demoralization of our women in the lyrics of this gangster rap that floods the airwaves. And so, I'll go on to my other issues that I'm taking up for two other people who won't get a chance to speak. Two flootill-a-way is a problem. That one flootill-a-way is owned by a young lady, has owned that property for 20 years. Two flootill-a-way is falling down into horrible condition. She needs your assistance, City Council. Not sure.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak at this time, please come forward, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live on Befford. That's the senior citizen home at the top of Befford. I am so glad to see you, and I want you to understand that I sit back and I watch. I've been coming here for 20-something years. Okay, Brother Ash came through, and he was talking to the boys, and one of them said, "Come on, you're supposed to stand up, shake his hand, and let him acknowledge that he's here." So, you are. You are doing a magnificent thing, because our black boys especially need this. I myself, the reason why I say this is that in Wilkinsburg, the five cops let my son die. He was saying, his head was bleeding, and he was on the floor, saying, "If I could only breathe, I could only breathe." They left him, and the man came back and kicked my son to death. My son was 35 years old, yes, and he was a nice fellow. Okay, I want you to understand that we live up at the top of the hill in the senior citizen home. They forget about us, but those streets that they made, you see them new streets? Well, they were coming and racing cars all night long. Now, I want you to see this. This is Cookie Coleman. No, Cookie Coleman, that's another, I'm sorry, this is Brenda Tate. Brenda Tate, and this is Reggie Howes, Salud Dean's brother. They called a press conference, and let me tell you something. I talk about the police, and a lot of times I don't say things that's good, but if you give credit where credit is due, those cops came in full force, full force, you understand? Three in a row stopped him, gave out tickets. Now, I was talking to one of the residents, and he was saying that they're coming back, so we need the cops to come back again. But I wanted to tell you that I thank you for coming, and you too can come and speak. You get three minutes. Come and be respectful. That's all we ask you to do. If you have a problem, because they're supposed to be the one to help us. Also, I was looking, and I want people to see, look out there on the sign. This is what your mirror says, "A Vision for Pittsburgh." Everyone, he wants everyone feel welcome in an environment where you can live and thrive. Well, I don't feel that when I come in here. Serve the people, keep them safe. You hear that? Serve the people, keep themselves safe. Show up, and I show up. Diversity, have diversity and spread success. I don't want the council to be perfect, but I want you to use best business practices. Okay, we also need, he said, decrease critical safety incidents for residents and city workers. They put signs that fall down, and when I call, they put two. My time is up. Thank you for coming, children. Come back again, because this is your council.
Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Anyone else in chambers? Seeing none, that moves us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Our first new paper is Bill 1703.
Bill 1703, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Risinger Comer and Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $27,472.90 for the 2023 year.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1712.
Bill 1712, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 675 of 2008 as amended entitled "Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and Approving the 2009-2013 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Brookline Boulevard by $20,268.07 and Increasing Complete Streets by $20,268.07."
To approve, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1724.
Bill 1724, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Development LP, Lower Hill Developer LLC, Parking Partners, and/or an affiliated entity in the amount of $900,000 to support in the rehabilitation of Ammon Recreation Center.
Motion to approve, second. I will defer, Councilman, if you wish.
Certainly, this is part of an agreement we have in place regarding the redevelopment of the Lower Hill. The Pittsburgh Par, Pittsburgh Arena Associates, are also going to be contributing $900,000 to the city of Pittsburgh, so that we can then utilize those dollars to rehab, rebuild the Ammon Recreation Center in the Hill District.
Congratulations, that's great.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. At this time, Councilman Kraus, he made a motion yesterday to waive the rules to bring a number of bills to today's agenda. However, there was one bill that he forgot to make that motion on, so he'd like to bring that bill to the table at this time. Councilman Kraus, motion?
Yeah, I would like to motion to waive the rules of council, so that Bill 1754 can be moved to today's standing committee agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived.
What was the bill number? I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, 1754.
1754.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve with discussion briefly, please. So, oh God, this is probably 20 years in the making, this signal improvement project that's taking place on 18th Street. It provides for bumpouts, which have already been installed in the intersections of Sarah, Jane, Sarah, Jane, Josephine, Mission, Arlington, and Amanda. We're now in the process of adding all the new traffic signals. It is a PennDOT project, and to, if I remember correctly, around $6 million. But the new signals are being installed as we speak, and one of them, which has been a desire of the Southside and Southside Slope residents for the better part of 20 years, is a signal installation at the intersection of 18th and Josephine, and people are just beside themselves that it's actually happening. So, I like the idea of just trying to get this to move along as quickly as we possibly can to help. That's why I waived the rules on the bills, and I appreciate your support. There'll be three, I think, under my committee that will come up, two or three. So, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So, moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative, invoices are approved, excuse me. Need a motion to approve the intradepartmental transfers?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first supplemental paper is Bill 1740.
Bill 1740, Resolution Providing for Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Larson Design Group Inc. for Costs Associated with the Southside Signals Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $595,665.24, an increase of $81,192.67 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 468 of 2021.
Will you read Bill 1742 as well?
Bill 1742, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the Southside Signals Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Theraft Not to Exceed $4,310,953, an Increase of $220,313, reimbursable at 100%.
A motion to approve, please. Very brief discussion. Director, I see you're here. I'm not asking you to come up, but if you wish to comment on the Southside Signal project, you're welcome to. If not, we're happy to just pass the bills. Oh, is that, oh, yeah, please, come up. Yeah, please do. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know, I was talking to Director Hornstein, but no, thank you. Thank you, yeah, and thanks for due diligence on this project.
Sure, just a quick update on it. So, there is, there has been a cost increase in this project. Oftentimes, we come here for adjustments to reimbursement agreements because we're authorizing a new phase or something like that, but in this case, there were costs associated with COVID-related supply chain issues. So, we had delays receiving our signal poles and being able to order them, and in that time, due to the pandemic, some of those costs went up. But as you can see with the two bills, that there is federal or PennDOT money, rather, in this, so that number that you're authorizing is not all local money.
Right. So, this may have come to be before you joined us here, but the intersection of 18th and Josephine has been a point of contention for as many years as I can possibly remember. And the desire to see a signal installed there has probably been maybe about the second priority of the council district, and so I'm really, really glad to see it come to fruition. Am I wrong to estimate this to be around a $6 million project? I can't remember the total cost, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but I'm just curious.
It looks like the total agreement with PennDOT is $4,310,000.
Okay, and that includes these additional?
I believe so. An additional signal will be added at 18th Street and Josephine Street.
Yeah.
And that includes the associated pedestrian safety improvements.
Yeah, really, really good work, and we're very, very, very happy to see it happen. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Strasburger?
Congratulations to Councilman Kraus for this gigantic project really coming into fruition, and I know that, you know, oftentimes, we work like intersection by intersection, segment of street by segment of street, and this one is a really, you know, holistic sort of approach to the South Side. So, congratulations and thanks to DOMI, and I know it's inter-agency as well. My question is about supply chain issues, something that we discussed briefly offline, one-on-one, but I'm surprised to hear, and maybe this is my own lack of knowledge here, but I'm surprised to hear there still are major supply chain issues when it comes to signal replacement parts and signal poles. Can you speak a little bit, even if it's globally, what is driving this at this point? I thought we were sort of starting to exit that phase of supply chain issues, holding things up.
Yeah, so in this case, there are cost impacts, and there's also schedule impacts. So, original construction completion date was May of '23. We've moved it to November of '23. So, in the grand scheme of our projects, it's actually pretty minor, it's in the same year. I don't have a lot of detail on it. I know some of it is material sourcing, some of it is employee sourcing and having people to work in these places to manufacture. I think we're going to see a lot of supply chain issues with the increase in federal infrastructure funding, because that's putting demand on the industry, and especially with the Buy America requirements that are in some places increased, especially for steel. We're probably going to see impacts of a lot of cities like ours that are benefiting from those federal dollars, that are now competing for those limited manufactured locally United States resources. So, we're going to continue to probably see those. But we have across the board seen increases in all of our bids coming back substantially, and that has really created a hardship on the city and on our department, because there are estimates that we have paid professional engineers and consultants to help us develop, so people are working really, really closely with the industry and the manufacturers especially that are coming back $900,000 over what everybody we were working with anticipated.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're going to continue to see just costs that have just been elevated since the pandemic as well.
Thank you. That's helpful, and just, yeah, I want to reiterate that if we're seeing, you know, in our own districts, a delay, like we've, you know, like I'm sure every district has seen in, you know, the infrastructure replacements at signals or in other ways, that's certainly contributing to that, both the staffing and the staffing at not just at DOMI, at all levels of the chain to materials themselves. So, I appreciate that kind of fuller explanation.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, thanks. So, just a quick question, I guess more for the public, but also just for me. So, obviously, these signals are very expensive, right? We said 6.5 million total for?
4.3 or so for this project.
Nonetheless, very expensive for one signal at one intersection, right?
Oh, this is the whole corridor project. So, this actually includes signal upgrades at one, two, three, four, five, six signals, or six intersections.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. That makes sense a little, but. Yeah, okay, so nonetheless, though, it is, just for the public, I mean, they are expensive. So, just for us, so that we, because, you know, I don't know, but I always hear people like, "Well, just throw up a, why don't they just throw up a signal?" And you're like, "Okay." So, just sort of a little bit of why, why are signals so, like, why are they such a?
They require a lot of work. So, we have probably between $50 and $60 million worth of capital projects in our Traffic Bureau alone, and a lot of that is federally funded and state-funded traffic signal work. They're costly because not only do you have physical infrastructure with our Smart Spines project, you've got software technologies that are getting improved so that we can manage remotely. Right now, my staff, my very limited traffic control electricians have to go out on site. If you want to change signal timing or a signal goes down, they have to physically drive out to one of our over 600 signalized intersections, just 10 of them. We're way understaffed. So, by having more evolved technology, which costs more, we are able to save on the operating side. There's also a lot of sidewalk curb ramp, safety improvements that go along with this. So, not only is it buying the pole, buying the signal head, getting the software, programming it, it's also curb ramps, it's also sidewalk extensions in some cases. And so, the projects overall are costly for those reasons, in addition to the engineering work that goes behind figuring out what that timing should look like, because none of these can be done in a vacuum. They're part of a system. We did, in the last two years, between our planning group and our traffic group, took a look at all of our signals, though, so that we could rank them based on who was outdated, who was breaking down a lot, where were their safety issues because of them malfunctioning, so that we know what order to approach investment. And in that analysis, we've also identified a few intersections that because the traffic volumes don't really necessitate a signal, that it's actually more financially advantageous to the city to remove a signal. And so, you'll see in our capital budget request this year that we've actually asked for a little bit of money to take out signals that are not working well and that aren't actually needed anymore, so that we can replace them with four-way stop signs that will work for the traffic volumes. So, we're doing everything we can to be very strategic when we make these investments, and the. And the great news is, for, compared to some of the other types of projects in our department, we have been very, very, very successful getting state and federal money for signal work specifically.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Second round, Councilman? To repeat what she said. I don't mean to, what the director said, but it was an extensive undertaking in that each of the intersections were rebuilt with bump outs and handicap accessibility. And then the new, can you tell me what the new signal switch boxes are that were installed? And if you can't, we can talk offline, but they're massive. I have never seen anything quite like this before. They're probably seven feet high.
Okay. I actually can't speak to that too much. I'm not sure exactly. But it's whatever our current technology is.
So I'll be 70 next year, and those signals were in place when I came home from the hospital. So that's how old they are, and God knows how long they had been there beforehand, and that was at each of these intersections. And I didn't realize just how outdated they really were till the new poles went in, and then you realize, oh, my God, those things are like, yeah, no wonder this had to be redone. So, yeah, just very excited about it. Thank you. I'll stop talking about it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1747.
Bill 1747, resolution, amending resolution number 446 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements and/or commodity master agreement with Direct Energy Business, LLC, for the supply of electricity to city buildings and facilities by extending the current term by three years through 2029 and adding additional services, such as the purchase of renewable energy certificates from a sleeved wind renewable energy opportunity for an annual increase of $25,963.43 and a new total amount not to exceed of $357,529.20.
Motion to approve, brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Count, or Director, do you wish to come up and make comment?
Thanks.
Brought the reinforcements today, huh?
Today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Chris Hornstein, the Director of Public Works. I'll have our guests introduce themselves.
Don Madrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Works.
Flor Marion, Acting Assistant Director for Sustainability and Resilience and Planning.
Great. Uh, floor is yours.
Oh, okay. I'm going to invite Don to kind of give us a brief overview of what this is.
Sure. So we have an exciting opportunity here. What we're doing is going out to market for wind energy that's being generated, actually in Ohio, that we can actually increase the city's portfolio of renewable sources. So in order to do that, we have to extend the current contract that you've already approved with Direct Energy or NRG, right? The two names are the same. And so we're succeeding this contract to allow us to go out to wholesale market for the wind, establish a price with our partners in WEPIC, and then add that to the portfolio. What we're excited about is this purchase of wind is going to be, is going to enable us to actually take some of our conventional energy out to market and get rid of it. So we're getting rid of some of the dirty energy, replacing it with clean energy.
And so this is an extension of an existing contract. Forgive me, I don't see the length of time in here, but it's an additional cost of $26,000, which brings it up to about $358,000.
Yeah, we're extending the current contract to 2029. So we're, so the contract has an additional seven years after this.
Gotcha. So three years to extend the contract only at a cost of $26,000?
So that's the service fee, right? That's part of the thing. So that's not the cost of the energy, that's the service fee connected to Direct Energy administering the receiving of that energy. The, what we're going out to market for through our third-party negotiator. So in 2019, we entered into a contract with NLX Advisors, our energy advisor for the city. So they're actually going out to market for us. It's a coordinated effort with the members of WEPIC, us, PWSA, so that we can scale up, right, and go to the wholesale market for the Pittsburgh region in a powerful way, right? So all this clean energy will be spread across the entire region, not just the city's operations. So they go out to market now, which they are doing, and negotiate, because it's a stock market, right? It's an energy market. So it's volatile, the prices change, fluctuate daily, right? So they've gone out to market for us as part of our energy advisor. We've come up to this block of wind energy we're going to buy. And so this enables us to then go out to market, secure, which we're at the tail end of, secure our price, purchase the energy.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you. Thanks for your explanation, your work. I recall a couple of years ago, there was the opportunity for non, for new entities to join the consortium, if you're a church, if you're a community center. Is that still the case? Do we still want to be putting out PSAs there for people to know that they can join in this consortium and purchase energy in bulk?
I'll take this question. Yes, we are. We are actually focused on this wind energy contract right now, but once we hopefully approve that, one of the next move over the next year that, under my leadership, is to try to increase again the size of WEPIC. Hopefully, we get more energy efficient, so we reduce our own city electricity usage, but we bring more members to benefit from this opportunity.
Great.
So yes, you can put a call out to a nonprofit in Pittsburgh interested in purchasing.
Yes, we have a lot of religious institutions in particular, but also other buildings. My other question is, are, is the school district involved? And I might be opening up a can of worms here, but like, just want to ask the question, are our schools part of this, or are they not?
They are not yet, but that is definitely a big user that we are interested in discussing with.
All right. Good to know. Thank you.
The more the merrier, right?
Absolutely. Yes.
It's about building scale.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cocke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Donnie. Hi. So, Don, when you talk about dirty energy, getting rid of it, are we selling it or are we just eliminating it?
So it's sold on the market by our energy advisor, and those funds go into a working capital among the WEPIC members that is, then, is what they use to make the purchase of the clean.
Like a swap?
In a sense, yeah.
I see. Interesting.
Like napkin math, right?
Right.
Obviously, you can't, can't follow the electron through the system, right?
And I know you're not a scientist, but when we talk about wind energy from Ohio, how is it transported into our system?
So that's where the, the regs comes in place, and I'm happy to have a side discussion to develop more on what WEPIC is and how we buy energy. I love talking energy, so everybody just email me. I'm happy to meet with your staff. But we get certified credits so that we are sure that the energy we're buying is coming from there. And that's where there's a market to trade those regs to make sure people that are producing wind are sending their wind only to one customer and not just sending to several people.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious as to how that is converted into energy here in Pittsburgh.
Right. Well, the, in general, the farm is able to create a finite number of megawatt hours per year. They can only generate so much. So what we're doing is saying, you know, very simplistically, we want X megawatt hours that's generated from your committing to send us, to send Direct Energy X megawatt hours out of your total you can generate.
Right. Through power lines? I just, you know, I'm struggling with like, how we get wind energy from Ohio to, you know, be incorporated into what we do. So I guess, again, I guess I don't.
I'm happy to get that for you.
It's more of a scientific question, maybe?
Yeah.
And since I have you here, you know it's coming. You are the project manager.
Director owes me $5.
The director's always good, but since you're here to detract from him a little bit, because the Public Works Division, we are in the process now of seeking or putting out an RFP?
With, so I actually can have some good news. We have completed all of our portions with zoning, with our friends in zoning. That is now put to bed. The plan set is finished, reviewed, and it's now back in the architects. Once we have the completed architects, I take a moment to write the RFP, and we're out. My goal, because giving dates is always a bad thing, right, because it's construction, right? There's no, there's nothing more fragile, right? But I do expect the RFP to be written within the month of August and out on the street by the end of August.
So hopefully, we have machinery there. So I don't mean to get off subject, but, so.
There has been forward progress.
Yeah, I know, Donnie, and I appreciate the work you've done on it, and I appreciate you filling me in all the time. I just always feel the responsibility to have you repeated here, because people in my district are like, it's not coming. But anyway, I know it is. We know it is, and I'm glad to hear it's going to progress.
Sometimes slow and painful, but it's always worth it.
Yeah, a little bit. So, so one last thing, and sorry to get off course there, but the dirty energy that we are selling, so we're really, we are improving our portfolio, but we're really not taking emissions off the grid, because somebody else will be using it.
Um, yes, it will be, we, so we have one block that we're going to have to sell off. We buy a block of energy every quarter, every few months, we make, our advisor will tell us it's a good time to buy, and we buy it. So because this wind opportunity is coming quick, we have to sell out one block that we had already purchased, not knowing we're getting wind so, so quickly. So yes, it's going to go back to market, but the more institution like us buy those renewables, the less there is a market for this coal and gas energy. Price is going to change if this market is as attractive. So the more of us continue to push for renewable and get rid of their, get rid and stop purchasing those other brown energy, the cheaper the renewable market is going to get, and slowly but surely, we will shift to a just transition.
I wanted to ask you, what's more expensive, whether it's the wind energy we're getting from Ohio, or the energy, the dirty energy we produce here? And I know it's more about the carbon footprint, but is there a price tag on each?
It's, uh, at eight.
So like in most things, that's a little bit of a loaded question, right? Because we may see an initial uptick upfront, but then we see the reduction over time as it spreads out over the system, as it spreads out over the city. You know, there are so many things tied to the cost of energy, right? So it's cheaper on the streetlight side, right? Because, you know, we control utilities for all the streetlights as well. We were some on streetlights, right? So every, every streetlight is a utility bill, every building's a utility bill, right? But it depends on your usage, right? If a building's 24 hours, if a building's eight hours, if a streetlight's 24, you know what I mean? So there's too many variables to just say it right now, but I'm happy to do that analysis for you.
Understand. When the energy trucks come, you need help unloading the energy that we're getting from Ohio, I mean, or however it gets here, I don't know. So I am really curious as to how that's.
I mean, I would assume it's a series of power lines, but I don't want to say that here, right? Like, for certain. I'll find that answer.
Okay, now that's all for me. Thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bill 1750.
Bill 1750, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Vermeer, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $9,437.26 to purchase a mini skid steer needed for the daily operation of the Forestry Division and providing for the payment of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Councilman.
I am so excited about the skid steer. I might actually break, would you, would you please? Now, and I would not have known this, except for my chief of staff, James Murray, I want to give him a shout out. He was like, that's the thing you've been wanting to buy for the bike lanes and the sidewalks. So several budget seasons in a row, now you'll remember, and I know Councilman Cocke and I looked at different models of these things and what kinds of attachments can they have? And so what is, what are we going to be using this for? And what is the potential to also clear, again, city-owned sidewalks that we're not clearing during the winter of ice, bike lanes on bridges that ice over, certainly clearing of debris, both in bike lanes and city sidewalks from leaves. Again, I've shared pictures with the director of the ones that some of the larger facilities in my own district use, like the ones that are parked outside of West Penn Hospital. I showed you those pictures, like, stopped my car and taken pictures, like, look at this, look at this tiny scaled machine that can do all these things, and they have different attachments for different uses. So, Director?
Yes, so this piece of equipment specifically for forestry is, you know, related to their daily work in trees, helps them to pick up logs and debris that, you know, individuals, you know, can't or shouldn't be doing themselves without risk of injury. So it is a critical need for them. They've had pieces. Yes, it does come with, you know, we are exploring the other attachments that, that can do that. On the question of snow removal, I mean, we do have set pieces of tractors currently that provide that service. They have a variety of attachments. They have brushes, they have snow plows, they have the ability to have salt in them. We do use them to plow and remove snow on city sidewalks and bridges where they fit, bike lanes included there as well. So, you know, we see that as augmenting that, that fleet and giving us another tool in the arsenal of things that we can use out on the street for a variety of, variety of functions.
I'm excited to hear that. I know the challenge is always having the personnel to actually move the equipment during the, whatever, storm or during the ice, you know, when there's snow and ice. So how are we looking there? We've added a lot of positions to DPW.
We, we have, and I'm cautiously optimistic. I mean, as I've mentioned before at the table, you know, training people on snow and ice removal takes time, can't just simply put them behind a truck or give them a piece of equipment. You know, they need, they need hours there to learn their, their task. You know, these, these things do come with trailers, just from the logistical piece, right? It's not like we park the tractor outside the steps. You know, somebody has to haul the piece of equipment to the location to perform the movements, and now we're talking not just about one person, but two people. The snow removal on the, what I classify internally as like the hand removal, you know, just quite simply, it takes longer than snow removal on the street, just because of the smaller nature of the equipment and the personnel involved. So, you know, we continue to tackle that and look at that. I'm cautiously optimistic that our, our snow removal for those items that are smaller in nature, not related on the street, but still critical to citizens, that we're going to have better performance this year. Again, as all things, like I constantly review that throughout the season to see where we can make improvements and then plan for those in the next season.
If you'll indulge me, just one more minute. I'm going to tell a story I've told before, that I was looking at one of those historical photos of the city. I'm on several Twitter feeds that, you know, it might have been our own archive department, I'm not sure which, right? It was showing a DPW crew in like a sepia-toned old photo of a horse and wagon, and about six men, it looked like, with shovels, shoveling snow. And I must have, over the course of a week, I kept looking back at it, I kept looking back at it, and there was something like really just, I must have looked at it 10 times until it struck me, they were not shoveling the street. They were shoveling the sidewalk. And they were shoveling the snow from the sidewalk into the street. So cities can do what they want to do that serve their residents the best. And so I'll just, I'll leave it at that. So, and I'll continue to have this conversation. I look forward to some new numbers on personnel and equipment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
And yes, I know Councilwoman Gross has been making the argument for smaller, nimbler fleet, whether it be in refuge or whether it be wherever. And I've seen all the pictures and the cutest little things, you know, so, but. So the cost of this machine is only nine thousand dollars, ninety-five hundred dollars? No, that doesn't seem, that seems like she'd get a dozen, but, you know. And, and the other thing was, you know, it says forestry, so is the forestry division going to be just utilizing this? Or is like Councilwoman Gross going to be able to depend on the Boomfield Bridge to be sidewalk to be cleared? Or is it going to be incorporated just?
It'll be, it'll be incorporated into the operation. I mean, it's going to be stationed at Forestry Division now because it's like part and parcel of their workload, right? Like right now, it comes with forks and other implements that allow them to grab a log. They're the division that is most likely to need that. And as we evaluate its performance, if we think that it's.
In the winter.
In the winter, in the winter, we will, you know, outsource it as necessary to support the operation. I think it's important to note that our forestry division is also busy in the winter doing tree removal work, even during snowstorms, it becomes critical. That's what happened last year. Well, that's what happened last year in the snowstorm around Christmas, where we had the extremely high winds coupled with the extremely cold temperatures. There was a lot of power outages, I think we remember that. Our forestry division was out there in pretty dangerous conditions doing tree work. And so in that instance, I use that as an example of we would take this piece of equipment that's for snow removal and we would transfer temporarily to a division that could use the implement to assist them with their snow removal work.
Sure. We have similar machinery, or no, this is a first of its kind.
Uh, we have similar machinery in, in parks maintenance and streets maintenance. David for manufacturer, but that manufacturer didn't make the specific implements that would be useful here to forestry. And so.
Is Vermeer the manufacturer?
Yes, they're the, they're the.
I think what you were showing me was John Deere, which I thought was the prettiest. But I guess it's not about being pretty, they're probably twice as much, so. Okay, no, that's it. I love, you know, getting these, I'm with her 100%. More nimbler fleet because of our topography here. You know, this case, I know this will address a lot of different areas and things that we can utilize that for, so. Uh, that's it for me, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our new paper is Bill seventeen twenty-five.
Bill seventeen twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Redevelopment, Lower Hill Developer LLC, Parking Partners Twenty-Three Block E LLC, and the City of Pittsburgh for the construction of a public safety facility within the Block E parking structure in the Lower Hill neighborhood of Pittsburgh for the construction of a city rescue station and/or a city paramedic station within a parking structure in fulfillment of the developer's obligation, which was part of the option agreement for redevelopment of the Lower Hill.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Other first.
This again is part of the Lower Hill redevelopment as part of the next phase of development, which is going to be both a parking garage and a live and a concert venue. Part of that development will also include a public safety facility that the developer will foot the bill for.
Men? Councilman Coghill?
Is this on the SEA property?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought so. That's all.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Madam Clerk, if you could read Bills Two Seventy and Four Sixty-Five together. Councilman Wilson is not here, but he's waiting on final language from the Law Department, so he's asking for a one-week hold on both bills.
Bill two thousand twenty-two zero two seven zero, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title VII Business Licensing, Article Ten, Rental of Residential Housing by Creating a New Chapter Seven Eighty-Three Short-Term Rental Permit Program. Bill two thousand twenty-two zero four six five, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter Five Forty-Nine, Residential Parking Permit Program, Five Forty-Nine Point Oh Eight Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills will be held for one week, Bill seventeen twenty.
Bill seventeen twenty, resolution further amending Resolution Eight Sixteen of Two Thousand and Fifteen, effective December eighteen, Two Thousand and Fifteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by Fifty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cent and Increasing Demolition of Condemned Buildings by Fifty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cent.
Go ahead, Councilman.
To approve.
A second. Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first supplemental paper is Bill seventeen sixty-four.
Bill seventeen sixty-four, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Campbell Transportation Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand eight hundred three dollars and thirty-seven cent for midstream fleeting and tug services for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three.
Motion to approve.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen sixty-five.
Bill seventeen sixty-five, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Green Gears in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand three hundred dollars for litter and waste control services provided for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second. Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen sixty-six.
Bill seventeen sixty-six, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Marion Hill Associates, New Brighton, PA, in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand thirty dollars for transportation, spud, and barge rental for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen sixty-seven.
Bill seventeen sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of RJ Brown Towing in an amount not to exceed eight thousand three hundred twenty dollars for transportation and rental of a barge for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill seventeen thirteen.
Bill seventeen thirteen, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate, affiliate in Alkasan for the sale of Block Nine B, lots seven, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight in the Twenty-Third Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city.
At the request of Councilman Wilson, whose district this is in, I'm going to motion to hold one week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held one week, Bill seventeen fourteen.
Bill seventeen fourteen, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all of the city's right title and interest, if any, and into the following publicly owned properties in the Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Twenty-Seven A, lots one oh eight and one oh nine, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen fifteen.
Bill seventeen fifteen, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, and into the following publicly owned properties in the Twenty-Sixth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block Forty-Five M, lots ninety-nine, one hundred, one hundred one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh nine, one ten, one fourteen, one sixteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, one thirty-two, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one thirty-four A, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one forty, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-five, and one fifty-two, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen sixteen.
Bill seventeen sixteen, resolution amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-Two of Two Thousand and Nineteen, which authorize a cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the URA of Pittsburgh to divert seventy-five percent of the incremental parking taxes from the garage as defined below, up to a maximum of twenty-five million dollars to fund general construction costs at the proposed Block E development, part of the Greater Lower Hill Development Project in the Lower Hill neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh by updating the project details in the whereas clauses that have changed since original enactment.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Councilman, do we have anyone in the room just to speak to? Since this is a tax diversion, I thought we should kind of have some explanation of the project and.
Sure, so this is helping to fund the development I mentioned previously, which is the coming Live Nation concert venue as long as a parking garage and a public safety venue. In two thousand nineteen, we passed legislation to divert the parking tax revenue from that garage to help fund it. Twenty-five percent of that also will go to the URA to support an affordable housing initiative for the Hill District. This changes none of that information. What it does is, in the whereas clauses, we describe the development as we knew it then. Since that time, the development has slightly changed. Previously, the garage was going to go underground, now it's above ground attached to the venue. This simply makes very technical changes to actually reflect the actual development, but it does not change the agreement.
Being a nine, is it a nine-hundred-car parking garage or something like that? That, you know, you would assume for a concert venue, like many of the other venues in the city, that we were getting a lot of people from outside the city boundary coming in and paying the parking tax to park there, basically, right? And so this is that diversion on those parking taxes.
Yes.
As you said, there's already an allocation plan that we voted on.
Yes.
I don't remember what year, twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen. And this garage is also designed to support much of the entire site, not just a concert venue.
Right, so there will be someone like, for example, when the housing is built, there will be the spaces already allocated so that the park isn't offsite. Thank you for the reminder also, and I appreciate it, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen seventeen.
Bill seventeen seventeen, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all of the city's right title and interest, if any, and into the following publicly owned properties in the Thirteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block One Seventy-Four J, lots one thirty-four, one thirty-five, two forty-three, two forty-four, two seventy-nine, two eighty-one, two eighty-two, two eighty-three, two eighty-three A, two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, three oh seven, and Block One Seventy-Four N, lots eighty-five and eighty-six, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
A second. Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventeen eighteen.
Bill seventeen eighteen, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate and University of Pittsburgh of the Commonwealth System of Higher Education or related entity for the sale of Block Twenty-Nine B, lots three oh six, three oh eight, in the Fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
I just wanted to defer to the Councilman, Councilman Kraus.
I'm good, I apologize, my phone is kind of blowing up. We are on, forgive me, seventeen eighteen, this is all good, thank you very much, Councilwoman.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, and Bill seventeen nineteen.
Bill seventeen nineteen, resolution providing for the execution of cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the administration of certain projects and programs and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, Council District All.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
This is the money that we had a briefing about yesterday. And I was debriefing with President Smith this morning about yesterday's briefing. And we thought that, she thought, and I agree, that there's probably still some questions about which pot of money should be moved for which kind of community grants program, especially since we have no kind of council grants right now. And so we've got this pot of money, it is in progress already at the URA. They've already sent out applications or, you know, requests for applications from community groups. So we don't want to hold more than one week, given especially that we're coming up on recess. But I'll still ask members if they have any more questions, that kind of stuff, so we can get things wrapped up by the end of the week so that we're all in a place that we're sure that we want to move forward with next week to, to kind of reach out to me and say, Councilwoman Smith. But with that, I'd, I'd ask for a hold for one week, so motion to hold one week.
Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week.
That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Thursday, July twentieth, at ten a.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill Three Seventy-Six as relates to the Land Bank Tri-Party Cooperation Agreement. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council Meeting webpage or call the Clerk's Office at four one two two five five twenty one thirty-eight. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, next Monday, July twenty-fourth, Council will hold a virtual briefing relative to the Verizon franchise agreement. Sessions are at eleven and twelve p.m. Next week, Council will hold our regular meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, at ten a.m. And a standing committee meeting on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, at ten a.m. respectively. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to please, please call the City Clerk's Office as well as at four one two two five five twenty one thirty-eight, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, we have one more item that is in front of members, which is a resolution that we tabled in a year ago, it looks like. I'm not sure when the tabling date was, but it's to adopt an amendment to the Steel Valley Authority's Articles of Incorporation. And I'll motion to untable, I think it's the correct motion.
First, need a motion to waive the rules to bring this to the table.
Motion to waive the rules to bring item twenty-two zero six four one to the table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been brought to the table, now you need a motion to untable.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Motion to untable Bill Twenty-two Zero Six Four One.
Second, with discussion, please. We need a roll call vote first.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. LaVell, Chair?
Aye.
Aye, seven.
The bill has been untabled, you now need a motion to approve with discussion.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for helping us through that. This has been held extensively and under law review with our solicitors and the city solicitor. And I think what, to speak for President Smith, she was concerned that we just not reduce the city's representation on the authority. And so I think the bill, as we have, the original bills we have in front of us, has her full support. And so we're finally bringing it back to the table.
Further discussion? Seeing, Councilman Coghill?
From what I remember of this, I thought this was kind of like defunct and we were, you know, the entire authority, is that right? No, is that right? Okay, so it's still functioning and do we have a representative from Council on there?
We do have, I don't know that we've had our seats filled, but we do have seats on the authority.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, I'm supportive, I just didn't know.
Further discussion?
So, yeah, ma'am, I'd be, I'd be lying to say I'm now a little bit confused about how and why this is coming up at this point in time and what the, the actual repercussions are for our approval.
I'm not going to be able to speak to it.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Now that it's untabled, if we want to hold it for one more week, I'm entirely comfortable with that, right? So it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can all refresh our memories because it has been quite some time. I think they're buried deep in our email boxes, if I'm not mistaken, that there were legal opinions. So we can refresh our minds and there's no, there's really no urgency, except that we've been taking a very long time with it.
No, and if I understand your presentation correctly, it's at the will of the Council President who wishes to see this come to be?
She was leading the work on it.
Yeah, and being she's not here, and you know, I, I just personally am comfortable if we just hold one week and, and, and do it next week.
That's wonderful.
Okay, so may I motion to hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. Anything else from members? If not, need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
No move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.